You guys ready?
As ready as I'll ever be.
Call the meeting to order, ask that you join us in the pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to our September board meeting. Glad that a few of you could join us. I think most of you know the announcements, so I don't think I need to go through all those. The meeting is being live streamed on YouTube. Recording will be available immediately after the meeting and will also be posted on the township website. As you know, written minutes will be available on the website as soon as the board approves them. Agendas for the meeting were posted on the building's entrance door and on the township's website. And if you didn't get them when you came in, they're available in the back of the room. We'll have two opportunities for public comment. After being recognized by the chair, we'd ask you to step up to the podium, state your name and address before addressing the board. If at any time you can't hear us up here, let us know. The microphones aren't always the same level of sound through the meeting. So just let us know if you can't hear us. With that, we'll do self introduction of the board.
Dave Rose.
Art Rutledge and Jeff Rogers, who usually sits to my immediate left, is on a plane somewhere tonight, so he won't be able to join us.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Rannell.
And to my left is Todd Ziegler, the township manager. Our recording secretary Wendy Brown is with us via YouTube. And we have excused our solicitor, Tim Buck, from tonight's meeting. And with that, we'll return.
When do you see Tim next, Todd? Tell him I miss him.
I will do that.
All right.
With that, we'll return to the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August 7th.
Sorry, I should let you finish your motion, I apologize.
It's all right, we have a motion and a second to approve the August meeting minutes. Questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we have approved the meeting minutes. And we'll move to the treasures report. I would note that interest stays up there at around $10,000 a month, so that's very helpful. And we had one big expense which accounted for the majority of the expenses for the month, and that was paving of various roads. All that came out of the liquid fuel funds, which cannot be used for anything else except road maintenance and associated items. Are there any questions on the treasures report?
I'll make a motion to approve the treasures report.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the August treasures report. Any questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we have approved that. This is the first opportunity for public comment, is there anybody wishes to address the board at this time? Right, seeing none, we shall move on. Next item is, we have several ordinances and resolutions. Todd, I'll let you kind of introduce each of these, they're sort of self-explanatory, but... The first one would be 24-14 multimodal grant application.
Yeah, this is a resolution that I'm going to ask the board when you make a motion, that it's retroactive to July 15th of 2024. And this is, we've discussed it at board meetings in the past, and the board was, you know, gave their okay to apply for a grant for the multimodal, for curb sidewalk. They just want it in the form of a resolution.
Okay.
So that's all this is, is what you verbally said at a previous meeting, is that's on paper.
All right, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-14. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we have approved Resolution 2024-14. Now we move on to 15, which is the adoption of Ascot Drive.
Yeah, this is, it's just a short section of Ascot Drive, majority of it is in Shrewsbury Borough. It's in the Heathcote Glen development. This will be a, well, portion of it's in, most of it's in the township. We're going to be adopting it, it'll come through on our liquid fuels. And then I'm just going to kind of touch on the next thing. The next resolution as well, because they're kind of tied together, is an intergovernmental agreement for the maintenance of Ascot Drive. And what that agreement states is that, well, it's a township road. Shrewsbury Borough will take care of the maintenance as far as snow plowing and so forth. We'll still take care of the paving and what have you. But we will give them whatever couple dollars we get in liquid fuels funding for it.
We can handle both of these in one motion?
We could, yeah.
Yeah, if the board so desires.
Some move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolutions 2024-15 and -16. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The Resolutions 2024 and -15 and 16 are thereby approved. And now we have 17.
Yeah, 17 is for, if you recall, the New Haven housing development. We're actually going to be talking about that plan later in the meeting. That's in New Freedom Borough. One of the access drives comes through the farm there on Kirshner Road into Shrewsbury Township. So what this resolution is for is for the authorizing the intergovernmental agreement cooperation with New Freedom Borough. And they will take care of all maintenance and so forth of that roadway, because it's only serving New Freedom Borough at this point in time. At any point in time that it's then developed in the township, then it will revert back to the township as far as maintenance and so forth.
And that has been approved, I see, by New Freedom Borough.
That's correct.
Questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
So a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-17. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we've approved 2024-17. Moving on to subdivision and land development, we have a couple of security releases, Todd.
Yeah, the first one is for Heathcote Glen III, which is down in the area. We just talked about Ascot Drive, Hastings Way. And we're holding a cash bond in the amount of $12,299.14. I already talked to Phil about this, we're going to hold 600, there's a little bit of paving to be done. So I would ask the board if you would consider authorizing the immediate release of $11,699.14. And then upon approval of the township of that paving that he has to do, that we release the 600, which should happen before the next meeting.
Questions from anybody? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to do the, you know, for the, but release the bond minus the 600.
Second?
Can we include in that motion that we release the 600? Once, um...
Yeah, if you're, if you're okay with that.
Then that says it.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay, you go ahead.
I'm all right, feels good for it.
So we have a motion and a second that we would release $11,699.14 at this time. And once the paving is completed, we will approve releasing the remaining $600. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we have approved both sections of the release.
The next one is bond release for Dunpar, which is 836 East Forest Avenue, which was the former True Value property. The amount of that performance bond is $278,961.38. Our engineer Jeff Schu, C.S. Davidson, has reviewed the request. They verified the work's been completed. And he is recommending that the board grant that request in the full amount.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the release of the full amount that remains for, I guess, Dunpar.
Yes.
Questions before we vote? Shall vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we have approved the full release of the Dunpar holdback. And I guess, Todd, is the preliminary subdivision plan?
Yeah, again...
This is New Haven again.
Yes, as I mentioned before, this is a, and I have it here on your screen. This is the township borough line. So all the developments occurring here in New Freedom Borough. The only thing that's going to occur in the township is the construction of this road, and that's the agreement we just talked about for the maintenance at New Freedom. We'll take care of until this is, there's any development done here. So we just need to take action on the plan, which is basically approving the construction of this roadway in accordance with the plan. It's been through staff as well as the Township Planning Commission, and both recommend approval.
Now, the C.S. Davidson letter does have some concerns about the CEA being managed and maintained and boundaries delineated and signs put up.
No, we, and that was their initial review.
Right.
And then staff discussed it with, including the zoning officer. And we've come to the conclusion that there's no actual subdivision of the property taking place, so we don't believe that those apply. If there was any subdivision of the property, then that would all apply.
So in a motion, there are some items in the C.S. Davidson letter that would apply. We usually make the motion.
There, there's, to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing outstanding, but it doesn't hurt to just include that language, just to make sure we didn't miss anything, but...
But it would include the things you just talked about that we don't want to be included. If it's all completed, then I don't think we need to reference the letter.
Yeah, there, there's nothing that needs to be addressed anywhere.
Okay, there's nothing outstanding, it's just a clean approval then. Right, is there discussion, questions or a motion? I'll make the motion that we approve the New Haven-Kirshner Road preliminary subdivision plan.
I'll second it.
Questions on the motion? Not, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, so we have approved that subdivision plan. And now we're to reports. By the way, the item D, I should note, we have deleted that actually before the meeting. Todd and I went through it, and we've had conversations with our attorney, with people from Hillwood. And I think we all agreed that there, there's too many, too much work that needs to be done all that to bring it up at this time.
Yeah, for, for those that have the agenda, there is no D. What happens is, we distribute the board packets to the board on a Friday. We review it and we finalize the agenda, you know, 24 hours before. That particular item was for a road agreement for Hillwood, for the warehouses on Elm Drive. There's a couple of things that need to be addressed, so it wasn't at a point where we're ready to act on it. So we're working with Hillwood to try to get all of that resolved. So that's been, been removed from the agenda for the board.
Right, that's been removed.
I don't like all that blue text in there, I'll tell you that.
What's that?
I don't like all that blue text.
That's part of the reason why we're
Yeah.
having some conversations with them, so we'll get, we'll get through it, it just needs a little bit more work. All right, under reports, we have the manager's report, so what Todd, is there anything you want to emphasize? Comment?
No, nothing in particular. I did include, you know, it's budget time for us, if you recall. Glen Rock Borough, Cadoras Township and Springfield Township did not do anything to increase funding to Glen Rock Ambulance last year. So I did send them a letter, I believe I attached a copy of that, just for your reference, asking all three of those municipalities to let us know if they plan to do anything for '25 so that we can adjust our budget accordingly. So I haven't heard anything back from anyone yet, but, so we'll see. And then the only other thing is, just to update you, we're still working with the Miller family for purchasing an additional 13 and a half acres at Miller Park. We, we're trying to schedule another meeting, it's just when you have eight people trying to get together in the same evening, it's hard to get a meeting time, so we're working on that.
The good thing about that is, at that meeting, they're bringing their solicitor and they've suggested we bring ours.
Yeah.
So we think that means they're moving forward, hopefully toward our being able to acquire it.
Yeah, I'm optimistic.
Finally put Tim to work.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Any questions for anybody, for Todd on the report? Okay. We have no report from the solicitor of the zoning officer, code enforcement, sewage enforcement report. Are there any questions from anybody on that report?
Anything I'll just add to make the full board aware
Yeah, you may have some comments.
Is, I'm going to say probably about two weeks ago, I received a telephone call from, from a lady who's with an engineering firm in Maryland. And she was asking about the township's zoning for solar farms in the agricultural district. And she's aware that we did amend our ordinance about two years, three years ago. And she just asked if there's been any discussion among the board that that might be revisited and so forth. And I, I just simply told her that there's been no discussion about changing it back to what it was since that time, and that the board that made that decision in 2021 remains the same board as today. And that's the last I've heard. So just wanted to let you know that, you know, they're starting to look around here in Shrewsbury Township, but...
I just have a question, what's going on with Humphrey down in there? Long time getting nothing done.
Yeah, well, he's working at it very slowly, but he's also racking up the fines, if you took notice.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
And how about down Oakwood, is that abandoned house down there?
On, um...
There's no, the septic, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's been abandoned for, oh my gosh, probably seven, eight years. But we did finally track down the owner. She's in York in a townhouse condo community. In fact, that was one that we, I just recently submitted to our solicitor, well, CGA, and Attorney McDonald's working on the execution, the writ of execution from the District Court's office. And when he saw the name, he thought, that looks familiar. It's interesting, because they represent, I think it's Spring Garden Township where she lives now, and they're having issues with junk and garbage, so he's dealing with her in another municipality. So we have, the lawn has always been mowed up until this year. Now, this year it hasn't been getting mowed, except for we have Brian Almany on contract take care of it. And then township's paying it, but then we're placing liens on the property, so it will get reimbursed for it.
Yeah, and there's a couple of people don't want to get their septic pumped, I wonder why.
We have actually now, we've gone, I think we've had all those hearings. I think we were down, well, there's two that are in court of common pleas right now. I don't know what that story is, but the ones that we had currently before District Judge Sweeney, those, I think are pretty much resolved. Usually if we can, we settle out of court before we go into the courtroom. So we do a reduced fine, they pay the court costs, they get the septic system pumped. And if they do all that, then we'll withdraw the complaint. So I have two in the last week.
We have, we've had a bunch of them lately, though.
But, but, but what that is, I mean, we could have avoided court altogether in the filings, had the individuals called and asked some questions when they got their late notices and so forth. But it was all just not understanding how the ordinance works in septic districts. Wendy does put in her letters when she sends out late notices that, you know, the four years is based on your pumping district, not when you had it last pumped. Because some people, you know, get it pumped every two years. They may have bought a property, you know, two and a half years ago, but it has to be the previous year or the year that it's due. So that's what the last two were all about. And they were fine, they agreed, and so we're working on getting this resolved.
Any other questions?
There's one, I'm out there at a car dealer out there down at Campbell Road, like, I forget the name of it, it's not southern, uh...
Yeah, that's a
Used to be southern, I was like...
Automotive guru.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And they can't keep popping up.
Yeah, that's a, the building code official, I, I keep reminding him that needs to be done. That was for that small addition they put on the back.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't have permits, so they were supposed to be getting plans for it. I actually met with him probably, meaning him, the building code official, the BCO, which is Kevin Herzog, maybe three weeks ago or so. And that was one we talked about, we need to get cleaned up and off the, off the reports.
Any other questions? All right, we shall move on from that. I have the maintenance report. Any questions on that, or anything, Todd, you want to highlight?
No, not other than down in Keene Sunset, they all have nice new paved roads. We, they, they paved the southern section of Mount area, as you know. And then they fully paved Hickory Nut Road, Golden Circle and Keene Sunset Road, which kept them pretty busy.
So yeah, Keene Sunset was pretty rough, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So they're pretty much done paving for the...
All the major paving, they have a little bit of small work here and there, but nothing major.
Major paving's all done.
A question about our winter maintenance, Todd, do we pre-treat the roads if you want the snows coming?
No.
We, we don't use brine or anything like that?
They used to do it, but Mike said he just doesn't see the, not for this area.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think you have the engineer's report. Really nothing on there, except some comments about the bond reductions that we've already taken care of. We have the recreation commission bylaws. I'm going to recommend that we table those. I've looked at them, Todd's looked at them. And there's some conflicts between this and the intergovernment agreement that we reached and a few other areas that we think need some wordsmith, wordsmith with them. So if everybody's in agreement, I think we should just table this and come back with a cleaner agreement.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, okay. So we'll consider that table until next meeting. You have, on a fire EMS, if Brad wants to comment on anything, or... All right, we'll go by that one. Have the planning commission report. Ad hoc committee on short-term rentals, that's a meeting next month, or, no, it's later this month, isn't it, Todd?
Later this month.
Yes.
And Todd and, I guess you're, you're working with our zoning, half of our zoning officer team to put together some recommendations.
Some draft language.
Yeah, a draft ordinance that we can take a look at at that, so that's in process. We did have a sewer committee meeting actually just yesterday. Progress is slow, but we think it continues. There are a few action items where one member is going to try to sit individually with members from, at least Shrewsbury, I guess both the borough and the authority, and try to explain to some of them, many of who are new, kind of some of the history and what's happened. And Todd and I continue down the road, talking to other members and trying to gather some information as we try to chase down whatever's out there that might, we might be able to get ahold of and buy back and resell. Dave, if you have anything to add?
No, no, it was good. Summary of events?
That brings us to supervisors' comments. I didn't have much going on, so you, you have mine. I would comment that if you have any operating or capital budget requests, they're due to Todd by September the 10th. I'll be getting a memo out to each of you that starts the, gives the timeline for the manager's evaluation process. It's time to look at that again and also to get together with a, our annual evaluation meeting with our contracted engineers and zoning officers that we do every year, usually around the beginning of November. So I'll get some memos out on all of those items. Any comments from other supervisors? None, okay. We would move then to the Mount Ari road study, the speed study we're doing. And interesting that it's the worst speeding we've seen on any study that we've done. Interesting that people were driving that road at 75 mile an hour. But I don't know if you want to give a...
Yeah, I was going to say if I could, just to follow up after last month's meeting, let everybody know where we're at and what we're, what we're doing and what information we're gathering. Immediately after the last meeting, the next day, our maintenance crew moved the speed radar signs just to make people aware of what their speed was, try to draw attention to that. Then also that same day, they did the road bank mowing that was requested of one of the residents. And while the hidden driveway sign didn't have anything to do with the accidents and so forth, we did get that up as well that next day. We're also in the process of, we've made a request now for all the state police crash reports over the last two years on that section of Mount Ari road. I believe it was a total of 20 that, that's, I'll put it to you like this, the state police gave us a list of 20 crash report numbers, so... Yeah, pardon?
There were some we didn't get.
Yeah, yeah. So we're in the process, those have all been approved or released to us. We started getting some of them, but we don't have all of them. So once we get them, we're going to just pull some data together and, you know, put dates, times, you know, weather conditions and that type of information. And we'll put that together in a spreadsheet to try to summarize, you know, all of those. So we're working on that. Reached out to the township engineer, Jeff Schu. He's been away on some vacation, he is back now, but we're going to be scheduling a time to meet with him and go down there, take a look at the road. Also reached out to LTAP, which is a program for the municipalities through PennDOT. It's the local technical assistance program. So they have engineers on staff as well, there's no cost to us. But of course, there's no cost to any municipality in Pennsylvania, so they're in high demand. So we're on the list, and they could not give us an estimated time when, when they'll get here, but they assured me we're on the list. And then the last thing is, while we also have the radar signs up, and as Art had mentioned here, this is the first three weeks of speed results. As you can see, for a three-week period, it was a total of 126,700 vehicles that passed through that roadway, that curve that seems to be the biggest issue there, if you can. And that's both directions, northbound and southbound. Of those, you can see our program breaks it down by in five mile increments. So we had 39,500 that were speed limit or below. And then, of course, you can see this, so we're looking at here roughly 10 miles and over, what are we looking at there, roughly 16? Yeah, 19,000. These numbers here become a little surprising. I don't know how three cars meter around the corner at 71 to 75, but... And then, you know, I, I'm not surprised frankly at the 51 to 55 and even the 46 to 50, but those are the numbers. We're going to continue to monitor the speed and get several more weeks of data, which I think will also be helpful to the LTAP engineer as well. I did share this, what you see on the screen, I did share with the state police and ask if they could provide a little more presence on that stretch of the roadway so that they could see that there is, you know, at least that's part of the problem, so...
Interesting, the speeds are pretty much the same in both directions. I noticed when I looked at it.
Yeah.
This does not agree with previous studies, which is surprising, because previous studies did not have this amount of speeding, so I'm not sure why. You know, we've done it, what, LTAP did one and we did at least one.
We did one in '21.
Yeah.
I don't know if the time of year had something to do with it. I don't know if the time of year had something to do with it, because the first one was done, I believe, in
It's significantly...
Like December into February or something.
Again, we're not singularly focused on that, this is, this is just one element
That we have to look at.
To look at, along with the road surface and grading and a lot of other things that are there. I think Mike's investigating some more braze of toppings, but we want that expertise from LTAP, who has a lot more experience around the, the state and gathering information and even our own engineer, so this is just an effort that, um, continues to be in process right now. Questions from anybody?
Has anybody ever traveled on a road where they have, I call them rumple strips, strips across the road, and they really get your attention? They make a, as you drive over them.
Like the painted ones?
No, no, this, they're, they're, they're raised up, and you run over them, you can when you're going over them, it gets your attention.
It's the same type thing if you run off the side of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
But they have them right across the road, and I forget where it was, and it gets your attention, it's a dangerous area ahead, and it slows you down.
Yeah, I, I don't know how well those have worked there, because they make a lot of noise and people with houses around there, I think that would be the next thing we hear.
But it certainly is, can be a consideration, yeah.
Well, if you put up a wall like above eighty-three, you know, it's a sound barrier.
There you go.
Anything else, questions? All right, we move on to, um, the Glen Rock Sewer System, another interesting situation.
Yeah, we, we talked about this briefly last month, uh, there, as you recall, there was at Manchester Street, there was a broken sewer lateral, uh, but it was out in the public right of way, so that's becomes either the township or the Glen Rock Sewer Authority's responsibility. And, uh, looking at the agreement and having conversations with Glen Rock Sewer Authority, it's very clear that Shrewsbury Township is responsible for the maintenance and repair of those sewer lines, mains and what have you. Why? There was never any kind of, uh, fund established for maintaining the collection system, I, I don't know, but I think that's something we need to take a look at and, and consider for our twenty-five budget, and assessing some type of maintenance fee to the users of that system, because otherwise, um, you'd be using taxpayer dollars and, and that's not permitted for, for public sewer.
And you did say probably whenever we look out here, we're also gonna have to look at Seitzlin.
We would, yeah.
Because that's the same situation.
I don't think that one, the, the rates would have to be as high
Because it's newer.
Because it's only a ten-year-old system, so they have a little more time to, to build up a, a fund balance. But that's something we'll be looking at at budget and we'll, we'll present to the board.
You had a figure of what it costs us to do that one repair?
Yeah, we actually, we did get an actual invoice, which was two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
And that serves...
Which was actually a good price.
Would you say that serves about a hundred and forty people?
Uh, between the two, yes. Pine Street's right around, I'm pretty sure it's a hundred and three, if I remember right. And Seitzlin, I remember it writes around, right around forty
Okay.
total, both phases, so...
Okay, so you'll continue to work on that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have something for you for
Somewhere in the budget proposal. Okay. Any other old business? Now, we'll move to new business, we have our Kindness Worldwide Proclamation. And this is just something that, um...
Yeah, again, this is a Kindness Week Worldwide, it, uh, actually originated in York County, I believe the gentleman is from Dover, Dover Township area. Um, there was a whole write-up in the, I believe it was the Sunday paper about a week or two ago about it. So, it's just there, he's asking that, he's trying to get all of York County to participate in this, simply by passing a proclamation. And it just talks about, you know, what the Purpose of Kindness, uh, Week is worldwide. And, uh, it would officially be recognized November ninth through November sixteenth. And the theme is See the Good, Be the Good, Go the Extra Mile.
So, we have that in front of us. Is it like this, or does it need a?
There's no signatures or anything, so, what, it, it, yeah, you should just, if the board's okay with it, I would do a motion and vote on it to incorporate it into our minutes.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, um, to approve the proclamation of Kindness Week Worldwide. We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, so that is approved. Next item on new business is our annual minimum municipal obligation for pension.
Yeah, this is, uh, again, this is an annual requirement by September thirtieth of each year. Anyone that's a member of the Pennsylvan, Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System has to adopt a minimum municipal obligation, there's MML, uh, and this is for the planned year two thousand twenty-five. The minimum obligation of the township for next year would be forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents. Now, with that said, um, every year, anyone that's part of that program or at, really has any pension program, uh, receives state aid on that, and last year, the year before, we may have paid him five hundred, but last year, I know we got more than what the MMO was, so it's pretty rare that your MMO is more than what you receive in state aid. So, you just really need to
So, the paper...
Make it a motion to recognize that this is the MMO for twenty-five.
The paperwork is done, and traditionally, and we would expect, again, that would pretty much be covered by state aid. But we do need to, um, approve, approve the worksheet, I guess, so is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minimum municipal obligation as it's presented here. If no questions, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, that's so approved. We have the York County Open Space and Land Preservation Grant Program, Todd?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna, what I'm asking the board to do is authorize me to submit an application uh, through the York County Open Space and Land Preservation Grant Program, but under the Marcellus Shale Legacy Fund. Uh, that can be used for recreation and so forth. The maximum grant amount is forty thousand. Uh, the project we're looking at at Windy Hill for the large pavilion and, and amenities and so forth is two hundred and ninety-four thousand. But what my thinking is, is if we get this forty thousand dollars, uh, through the county, we can use that as a match for a grant application that we could then submit in the spring to DCNR for those park improvements. So, that could count toward our fifty percent match.
Questions? Anyone?
Make a motion to approve the, um, York County Open Space and Land Preservation Grant.
Second.
A motion and a second that we would approve, and I guess it's really an application for that grant. Questions? We'll vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we've approved that application being made. We have two things from, uh, Kinsley Construction, this is their paving projects, the first is a change order, Todd?
Yeah, the first one is a change order in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty-seven cents. The original contract price was four hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars even. With that change order, the contract will increase to four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. What the change order covers is the engineer, engineering, our engineer that prepared the bid documents had an error on the square yardage for Patozzi Road, so what was bid was a lesser square yardage and tonnage than what was actually placed. And Mike talked to me about this even before we got the change order, and, uh, he did verify that what they submitted here is accurate.
Accurate, and they just did it at the same rates, they did everything else.
Correct, it was just the, the quantity.
Add square footage.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to handle both, let's do that one first. Any questions on the change order?
Make a motion to approve change order number one. I'll second it. Eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and the ever-important forty-seven cents to Kinsley Construction.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Kinsley Construction change order. Questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we've approved the change order, and then we have an application for what would be final payment for the work they did.
Yeah, this is the first and only application for payment, and the four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents includes, uh, the change order that you just approved.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the application for payment to Kinsley for four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five cents, uh, forty, four hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and twenty-five thousand and forty-seven cents.
Forty-seven cents on both of them? That's impressive. I'm sorry, just, it's the details.
You want a second?
No, no, I, Jeff seconded it.
Oh, okay.
I, I heard a second from that end of the table.
We have a motion and a second, or are there questions before we vote?
I'll third it, if that helps, we can, we can just approve it.
I'll let you vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four votes to the affirmative, we've approved the application for payment. Um, you have a little bit of correspondence, um, there's an open house for our insurance agent. We are part of the VIP group that's invited, if anybody, the information's there, if you're interested. There is a workshop that York County has invited us to, but that conflicts with our, uh, budget workshop, so that probably doesn't work for anyone, and there is the, uh, LGAC, uh, monthly newsletter that is attached in the packet. Any questions, or anybody want any of that? If not, that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is an opportunity for public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the board at this time? If not, do I have a motion?